Just so that it's in a safe place.
Okay, let me know when to begin.
You can start now.
Okay, well, everyone, welcome to the Pearl Hill Crawford Memorial Library Board of Trustees April 28th, 2020 meeting. A little different for us, first time we've done a meeting remotely. Obviously, not the only people who are doing that because of the situation with the coronavirus. So we welcome you all if you're watching us and I have to begin with a statement from the governor regarding remote meetings. So I'll start that now. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Sections 18, this meeting of the Crawford Library Board of Trustees will be conducted in total or in part via remote participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at DudleyMA.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner, via Facebook Live and/or posted link at DudleyMA.gov following the meeting. No person in, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. A roll call vote is required for all votes taken under this order. So we'll begin following the agenda before I call it to order. We'll have a roll call introduction of those in attendance. When I call your name, would you please answer here? Richard Clark?
Stephanie Ford?
Here.
Ben Craver?
Here.
Joyce Narisinski?
Here.
Harrison Records?
Here.
Drusilla Carter?
Here.
And I'll say hello to Carol Savard, our clerk, and she's also the facilitator of our meeting. Thank you very much, Carol.
You're welcome.
We'll call the meeting to order. The time is 6:17 and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could stand and face a flag, of course.
Find one.
I have scarfs.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you all. Okay, we'll begin with the review of the February 25th, 2020 meeting minutes.
I read those online. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Oh, you roll call.
Oh, yeah.
Richard Clark, yes.
Stephanie?
Stephanie Ford, yes.
Ben?
Ben Craver, yes.
Okay. Joyce?
Joyce Narisinski, yes.
And Harrison?
Harrison Records, yes.
And Pat Corchey. Who seconded that, please?
I did.
Richard.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, the next is our director's report. Drusilla, please.
So we are, Lita and I are here in the building every day. Lita is in the building until 1:00 PM and I am here starting at 1:00. So we wave at each other on our way past. We have been working really hard to come up with online sort of programs. We're doing Storytime Live once a week as well as other readings. A number of libraries on Facebook are sort of swapping various videos and programs. So if you keep an eye on our Facebook page over the next couple of weeks, you'll see a number of those coming up, but then they're taking our videos that we post so that we're not all reinventing the wheel with kind of shared resources. We are hearing from a few patrons, especially now that CW Mars has enabled for all libraries an instant e-card, which lets you download ebooks or audiobooks even if you don't have a library card. It's good for 90 days. It does not allow you to access anything else, just those items. But we've had some people calling us and it's interesting trying to walk through someone how to download an ebook on a Kindle when you're not looking at a Kindle. But we've had some fun trying to do that, but and then we've updated some passwords for folks who've forgotten their PINs. We are noticing that our Facebook videos and so on, I just checked, we published this morning one. A friend of mine runs an origami club at her library, so she let me post one of her videos. We've had 113 people watch the video today, which is quite, we couldn't get that many at an actual origami club. It's been interesting to see the numbers. We'll have 30 people tuning in for Storytime Live every week. So we feel like we're helping a little bit, or trying anyway. As books come in, we are still getting some books in the book drop, although the due date has been extended consortium-wide at this point to July 1st. We do have some people who are returning items. I guess they, you know, why, why keep them until July if you might forget? So what we're doing is we're putting those on sort of quarantine book cart. The best advice we're getting is that a virus doesn't live on paper or cardboard for more than three or four days. So we put them on a quarantine book cart and don't shell them for a week and we figure, you know, we're not licking the books. We wash our hands before we shell them. So we're pretty good on that front. And then both of us have been doing a lot of outreach to local social services and so on in concert with the town and doing weekly check-ins, meetings with John Ruda and Michelle and the selectives and so on. So we're staying busy. It's really weird having them in the building though.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I noticed that the likes on the bids are really doing well on Facebook. Too bad we can't count those on errors.
Yeah, there is some talk, MBLC has been doing a lot of back and forth about how to measure statistics because obviously our circulation numbers are shot and our program attendance is zero. So there's been some talk about a way to possibly add a virtual programs count, which fortunately Facebook makes that really easy. We just go through our videos and stuff and it tells us how many views and how many interactions we've had. So we're, that's kind of up in the air right now, but at least maybe it will be something.
Sounds good. Now, how about a staffing update?
So I am talking to all of the staff regularly. I actually just got off the phone about an hour ago with Susan, but kind of just checking in to see how everybody's doing and some of them are going a little stir crazy. Although I did have one who said we can't open too soon because she hasn't finished painting her dining room. But they are all aware of the fact that this is kind of an evolving situation and that we don't know when we're opening. I have reminded John Ruda repeatedly that I need everybody back a week before we do open because there's going to be a lot of cataloging and processing new materials and so on. Just getting ready for programs and getting posters done and so on is a multi-person effort. So they are all in pretty good spirits. A couple of them have asked to check things out. So we've kind of waved through the door when I left stuff outside the door for them. So everybody seems to be doing pretty well. Like I said, they're all, they're all aware of the fact that this is, you know, we don't have an end date as much as I wish we did.
Right. The governor just extended the date to May 18th too today, so.
Yeah, and then in his, we, Lita and I have both been watching the governor's videos every day. He does a live broadcast.
Right.
That's, that's sort of our, I listen to it as I drive in and she listens to it as she's getting ready to leave. And he did say that the 18th is probably not going to be the final date. It's probably going to be extended. So we're just kind of taking it a week at a time.
Exactly.
So I have a quick question. Is the fact that all of this is going on, is that going to affect the 10th anniversary celebration?
Yes.
Because just being able to plan it before that date.
Yeah, Lita and I, Lita and I are actually meeting tomorrow. We're arranging slightly. We're rearranging our hours a bit. So we always do on Wednesdays that I can record live Storytime, but we're going to sit down and talk about summer reading and all of the summer programs and try to figure out what we're doing because, you know, summer reading kickoff would be June.
I was wondering.
You know, we're not really sure we want 80 kids showing up.
No.
So we're looking, we're going to talk about some of the options. We have had some presenters talk about doing virtual programs for us.
Yeah.
So we're going to talk about that tomorrow and also kind of see if we can figure out a good date to shift the 10th anniversary probably to sometime in the fall.
All right, that sounds reasonable.
Glad to think you have that on your mind and everything. You're going to be working that out. That's good.
Oh, yeah, we've, we've been going through. So right now, all programs through June 1st are officially canceled. We've talked to all the presenters. We have it labeled on the calendar. And then in another week or so, we'll start reaching out to our June presenters. But we wanted to figure out, sit down and figure out for sure what summer reading was going to look like this year.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do we have our budget?
Yes, and we're not spending much money. It's funny how that works when there's no one in the building and we're not. We have book orders sort of in the system, but they're on hold right now because what's the point in having, you know, books showing up when there's no one to read them and cataloging usually takes three or four of us to get a shipment done. So, so right now, we're not even getting invoices for those. We won't get the invoices until they ship. So we're, we're sort of spending the bare minimum right now. But there are weeks that I'm not getting any invoices at all, which is weird. I'm not used to that.
Facilities?
We're in one piece. I was given a checklist by George, the custodian, just before he went on furlough and he has made sure that I'm following it. He does check in. So I have my things that he checks every week. So I have my checklist. It's on my calendar and I go around, okay, I need to make sure this works and I need to look in this room. And I've been trying to do a walk around of the building, you know, going into all the corners at least once a day. But right now, this building is very clean and shiny.
Great.
We've just finished repainting the fells room. That was the last, the last thing that needed doing. All of the walls have been washed. Every wall in the building, including like the lobby and the storage room, has been washed. The furniture has been cleaned. We, I mean, this place has not been this clean in a real time. The only thing, if anybody drives by the building, don't panic. We know the American flag is hanging by a single grommet. The new one is on order.
Madam Chair, if, excuse me, if I may, I'm not sure where we are in terms of the budget review, but I know in the minutes for February 25th, mention was made of a question regarding the utility charges and looking at the budget as presented, it looks like on the line item utilities, we are 62% well, well over the budgeted amount. Is that utility issue still what's causing that?
No, we have straightened out the fact that we were getting, we were getting bills for the streetlights, which they're not ours. They belong to the town. So we've straightened that part out. There will be, obviously with all of this going on, some things have just kind of not been priority. There will be some money coming back to that account.
Okay.
From the highway department, but that hasn't hit yet, although we will still be over on that line item. However, we're going to be under on a bunch of others, so.
All right. And the telephone, is that in that same category in terms of our being overcharged and other departments undercharged?
No, telephone for some reason this year went up, the rates went up precipitously. So that is one reason, if you remember back in the budget proposal process, I did ask for an increase in that line item. So that and utilities, I've spoken with John Ruda, so he knows that, you know, we're not making an exorbitant number of calls. We're not keeping the building at 85. It's just, for some reason, the rates are higher.
Drusilla, if I may, on the telephone charge, it looks like we budgeted 600 and we're already at this point at 928. Are other departments experiencing that same level of increase in terms of cost?
As far as I know, yes. The departments, like the fire department that has its own, the phone rates went up.
They must have, considerably from the look of it.
We are paying, and we have two lines. We have one line that's the actual phone line and then one line that is the fire monitoring line. So we get two phone bills every month, which a lot of, a lot of the departments don't, but just sort of the base rate, how much they charge you. And we weren't given a lot of notice of that. They just sort of, we're like, oh, by the way. So it's, it's not, like I said, it's not that we're using it more or anything. It's just the rates that the company is charging have gone up for everybody.
Thank you. Do you have any, do you have any idea for utilities, how much money is coming back in regards to the light? That whole light issue?
I don't know. The last time Debbie and I talked, it was several thousand dollars, but I don't have an exact number at this point. I know there was two of the bills that we paid were a total of 2,100, but those were just the two most recent. So I'm guessing that it will be more than, I mean, obviously it'll be more than that by the time we're done.
Just seems to be so much higher.
Yeah, and again, the amount that we pay, like for the gas bill, the amount we pay per firm went up this year. And part of the problem is we budget in, you know, for fiscal year starting in July and the utility companies tend to up their rates in January, which does not really help us when we're, we're trying to predict what the cost is going to be. So hopefully next year, we, I ask for an increase in that line item and hopefully that will balance out, unless they raise rates again, in which case we'll just keep increasing what we ask for.
Madam Chair? I don't know if you realize, Drusilla, that the town hall is getting new phones?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a separate system.
Oh, okay.
We have a separate, as, as we do with a computer system, we're on sort of a different network because of how, how our phones are connected somehow. So we have our own like little internal switch here. But yes, I knew that the town was getting new ones. Ours, however, I mean, they work. I like a phone that I can pick it up and it, you know, actually lets me talk to someone. That's my criteria.
Well, I believe what they're doing is it's voice over internet protocol with two landlines for emergencies, but it's supposed to save the town thousands of dollars.
Yeah, and part of the problem we have is because our computer network is not really ours. It's a consortium network, so we're limited on what we can do with it. We, we have only so much like bandwidth, if that makes sense. And I could talk to CW Mars about it, but I've heard from other libraries that, that it eats a good chunk of your bandwidth, which especially for us, trying to keep 42 computers running, is we have a bigger demand.
Right, makes sense, yeah.
As far as utilities go, some years back, it was determined that we were being overcharged because we were not given credits for solar.
We have checked that and we are getting those credits.
We are getting the credits. Okay, good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Because I know they were crediting us back, so we were working off the credit for a number of years. So that's why our, our bills were lower.
No, we, it does actually show that we are getting the credits and I, I had Debbie double check that with them.
Okay, good.
Part of the issue too is that if you go back on the library budget several years, about five years ago, the utilities line item was cut drastically. It went from being about $35,000 to being about $18,000. And so I'm not, I mean, I wasn't here, obviously, so I don't know why that drop was made. But, I mean, we're in New England. It's a big building with really high ceilings. I, my goal is to sort of work us back up to having that 35,000 line item so we have a cushion.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on the budget?
No.
All right. We touched on summer programs. Is there anything else you needed to say on that, Drusilla?
No, I mean, like I said, we're going to do our best to figure out how to do something that, that doesn't involve having 100 people at the library and some of it's going to depend on what our presenters can do. I had already made arrangements for like some adult programs that go along with the summer reading theme and I'm in touch with those presenters already about what the possibilities are for their programs to be remote. Lita has already been reaching out as well. So we're going to sit down and figure out what, you know, what we can do. It's sort of a strange new world for all of us.
Exactly. All right, so the next thing on the agenda is the landscape project RFP discussion. Now, that would be a whole lot easier if we were all in one room, I'm sure. But have you all had a chance to look at, well, obviously you've looked at the proposals, but the, the score sheets and the scoring, the final collective score sheet that I sent.
Pat?
And the winner is?
Yes.
Do we know the status of what these companies are doing right now? Are they not working either?
Most of them, as far as I know, and based on the fact that several of them have emailed to say, hi, have you picked a winner yet? Most of them are doing a lot of remote meetings. I'm guessing that things like surveying the site and doing a walkthrough would still be happening, but focus groups, you know, obviously you're not going to sit down in a room with 20 people, so.
Sorry.
I, he clearly has an opinion about landscape architecture.
Make sure there's enough trees.
But yeah, so I think it's sort of, again, they're in the same hybrid situation we are, but I do know for some of them that they're, like the projects they were already working on, they're still going ahead with. It's just kind of how they do it is different. But several of them have reached out to say, hey, we're still here. Have you picked a winner yet? So.
Right. Yeah, I assume that some are working remotely because a lot of what they do is done on computer.
Yeah, a lot of, and getting feedback from, you know, at least one of the, the people said something about doing like questionnaires, feedback sessions, whatever. That's the kind of thing you can do remotely. You send everybody out like an opinion survey and then.
Exactly.
Collate the responses.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead.
When we get to the point, when we get to the point where we're going to have them pick a company and we want to sit down and do conceptual discussions and stuff, I would not want to do that remotely. I mean, I'd really want to meet this person and be sitting around the table to have those discussions.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of how most of them are working, that they're, they're sort of starting to get the information they need and going as far as they can before they, they sit down, you know, but things like walking the site. I know that they're going to, because there was a lot of discussion when we did the walkthrough, they're going to have to do some site testing to see whether there's actually a rock ledge under it or whether it's, well, that's the kind of thing they, somebody can go out and do that all by themselves and get that information and at least get that started.
Going to beat a drum that I think I pulled out of the closet last time. Couple of things I think we will hopefully be able to focus on and keep them focused on. One is sustainability and maintainability. Obviously, we have some staffing limitations and I don't know whether those will change or not when we have this additional property to maintain, but I suspect that they will still always be somewhat limited. So hopefully we want to focus that, on that. And if you will, on the Dudley zoning bylaws, at the very end of which you will find a reference to a number of native species that I fall into certain categories and hopefully the folks who are finally involved in this will make reference to that and keep that in mind. Again, I think that will help us in terms of the maintainability and sustainability if we try to focus on things that are native to the area or things that are at least able to grow and sustain themselves in the area.
Yeah, and both of those were covered at the walkthrough and in the RFP. We said that we wanted environmentally friendly. We discussed maintenance at the walkthrough. We talked about the fact that we would prefer native plantings and things that were sort of environmentally friendly. There was a discussion about stormwater drainage, which involved a lot of them talking to each other and I said, I don't know. That's.
Again, I refer to the, again, Drusilla, if I may, I would refer to the zoning bylaws because there are very specific lists, both I think they provided, Carol, maybe you can correct me on this. I think it provides both the generic name as we would know it in the English form and then also the scientific name as well for each of those items that is listed there. So I don't know that they've had reference to that specifically, but I would suggest that maybe we could give them some guidance in that regard.
Well, certainly zoning bylaws are something that would have to be consulted as part of the design process. I mean, they wouldn't have gone to look at that at this point because they're still just trying to find out how they would do the design. We didn't, I mean, they haven't had any reason to start thinking about what the design would actually be. It's just what the process of creating a design would be, so.
All right, then I would just offer it as a point of reference for the future then.
Yeah, but things like checking zoning bylaws and checking surveying requirements and so on would all be part of the, the design process. You may have noticed in some of the budgets, they included possibly needing a survey because no one at town hall can find the survey, so we may need another one. That kind of thing would all have to be considered.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, do you see us selecting someone? Or do you want to, Ben, addressing what your thoughts were, do you see us inviting a couple of firms back in to speak with them prior to making a decision?
I'd actually, you know, like to have a face-to-face with the, like, the finalists, just so we have a comfort level who we're going to be working with.
That was not part of the RFP. The RFP just said it was going to be based on the packet. So I don't know legally speaking if we can change that at this point.
Okay, all right.
Because if you look at the RFP, it said that you had to submit a packet. It didn't say anything about, and that, that selection we made based on that packet, it didn't say anything about then bringing people in or having face-to-face. It just said, submit your packet and we'll pick one, basically.
Right. I, I felt that the packets did give a lot about the personalities of the people involved. I thought they were helpful in that way, especially.
Having met most of them, most of the packets, I remembered who went with which packet and it was very interesting to me to see how well the packets they submitted went with the people when I talked to them. That was, that was kind of fun. I was like, oh, yes, of course, that's that person.
Yeah. Now, now, since you have already met them, Drusilla, what is your feeling about the, the collective scores?
They are quite in line with what I would have gone with. I certainly, having, having talked to them, MLA would have been my first choice. They were very excited about the project, made a point of saying how much fun it would be. And they specialize in, in projects that involve children and, and clearly you could tell that their focus was on a space that wasn't just, oh, look how pretty it is, but a space that was fun and that was child-oriented. Yeah, so I very much felt that the collective scores kind of went along with, with my interactions with them.
Okay, exactly. After reading, at least especially one of these, my, my comment was, we're not looking for six flags. We're looking for a space that will be comfortable as a reading area, program area. Yeah, exactly. Sounds good. Anyone else have any thoughts at this moment? Are you comfortable with making a decision at this point? Do you want to each discuss with Drusilla separately before making a decision? We have a meeting coming up on May 19th, which isn't that long from now.
That's our next board of trustees meeting?
Yes, yeah, because we weren't going to have one close to Memorial Day. Yes. Yeah, because, uh, we weren't gonna have one, uh, close to Memorial Day.
Memorial Day, yep. In case everyone was traveling, which no one's doing.
We'll have a virtual barbecue.
Yeah.
So how does the town's action that nothing go forward affect this?
It doesn't because it's not town money. This is money from the endowment, so it doesn't affect anything because it's not in the town's budget.
Exactly.
Yeah. This is, this is our money. I mean, if, if you as a board decide you wanna have a barbecue with it, um, that's, that's up to you and the town doesn't, doesn't have a say in, in how it's used.
Excuse me, on that subject in terms of the endowment, uh, those are funds that are invested, I assume correctly?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I suspect whatever the market value was when we, we went into this, it's probably considerably, uh, less than that now.
Um, no, it goes over, uh, it's a rolling average of, oh, I wanna say thirteen quarters. So we, it's not an immediate, it doesn't rise that quickly and it doesn't go down that quickly.
Yeah, we got our last, if you look on the budget summary, uh, sheet, that's our most recent, um.
That was a January, that was a January date though.
Um, did I, hang on. I thought I got one more recently. Let me find. Just this being at my desk is really handy.
One seventeen, January seventeen.
Um, so as of, yeah, so it had not changed. It doesn't change much. Um, I doubt we'll see a change in it. As Ben said, it's an average. So I doubt we'll see a change for quite some time. And some of the money, um, Ben, correct me if I'm wrong. But we have to take them, or we're supposed to take a minimum amount out, a certain percentage every year, and we have not been doing that. So there is, there's a pool of money sitting there that we were supposed to use and we have it. Um, so that, that we're entitled to whatever, no matter what happens.
Right. That's the UNHARIT, the Crawford Fund. With the yearly, uh, award, yes.
So we have, we have a pool of money to draw from that's not gonna change because it's what we're supposed to take for however many years running and we haven't done.
So are we looking for a motion at this point in time to decide whether we are voting this evening? Or putting it forth till next, until May, till our next meeting?
I will put it toward, uh, toward the trustees because I, I did speak with Drusilla about her, um, her thoughts on, on the people that she did speak with, um, which I found helpful. But I, I had already done my scores prior to speaking to Drusilla or seeing her score sheet. And I was quite in line with what she said, so.
And I, I must admit, I found myself being in line with that process also. Um, cause I was going with you and I talked, Pat, and what I saw also, and I'm leaning that way too.
And what way is that, are you leaning? I guess I know.
Number six.
MLA.
Oh, okay. That was the scores, that, that was the scores and how they came out.
Yes. Yeah, okay.
Exactly. Richard, comment?
Well, uh, maybe I'd man out on this one. I, I think I, I saw a couple of them, uh, as being very close, actually. Number three and number, number six. I think about, I would feel confident going with either of the two. And obviously, if, for the difference of the five points, obviously MLA is in the lead as far as that goes. Is it in order at this point for someone to make a motion that we, uh, go forward with the MLA proposal as presented?
Uh, yes, I believe it is.
All right. Then I would make the motion that we go forward with the offer as, uh, the proposal as presented by MLA Studio. And, uh, I guess, given the uncertainty of the times, find out what the next step might be.
Exactly. May I have a second?
I'll second that. I second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, roll call please. Richard, could you start?
Yes.
Richard, yes.
Joyce Narotinsky, yes. Stephanie?
Stephanie Ford, yes.
Harrison?
Harrison Records, yes.
Patricia Court, yes. Okay. Most approved, unanimous.
Next one, I will, um, reach out to John Ruda and make sure of what, how he wants to contact them because he's officially the town procurement officer. Um, and once I have that information, I will, I will reach out to them and find out what they wanna do. And also reach out to the others and thank them for their bids and let them know that, uh, we've chosen our designer.
Okay, great. That's exciting.
It is. I'm excited.
Big step, big step.
Lita will be very excited. She is so excited about this space.
That space has been a long time coming. You know, we talked about it for years and, uh, it's nice to think it's a fortunate, you know, what the entire world is going through right now. Uh, but it kind of gives us a little light at the end of the tunnel there. It's something new and exciting. So, um, depending on, uh, on what they say about proceeding further. Yeah, we can, uh, see what happens.
Yeah. And then once I, once I know what their, kind of their feedback is or what they're comfortable doing right now, I'll obviously let you know. Um, but then if it's all right with the board, I'd like to announce on our Facebook page that we are going to be going forward with this project. And share that with the town. And again, a little bit of good news, I think, for, for the people in Dudley.
Okay.
I think that.
They may know that already, Drusilla, because we're live, so.
Depending on how many people watch Facebook, you never know.
Or watch the library trustee meeting.
Yeah, exactly. Must see TV on a Tuesday night.
I don't know. People are getting bored at home, I think.
Would we need to, uh,
Reach out to.
Check with Mr. Ruda before we went very public with this, just to be sure that all his teeth are crossed and ties about it?
The first thing I'm going to do is tomorrow morning, I will reach out to him. Um, let him know that the board has voted and find out what the next step is. Um, he is the procurement officer, so he can tell me what, what we need to do.
All right.
And can you let us know what, what that next, like?
Yes, of course. I'll, I'll send you an email as soon as I hear from him. Um, and let you know.
Yeah. I just don't want it to be perceived by the public. I don't know how it's gonna be perceived by the public with us going forward this, in this time, even though I so much want this to happen. That's my concern is I just don't know how the public will perceive this.
Yes, I, yeah, I agree with you, Joyce. I think we need to be careful how, how we announce this. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would hope that the public would see this as a sign of good things coming.
Right.
You know, an opportunity to, to celebrate, expand and to, uh, you know, in, provide us something that has been lacking for many years in terms of just a vacant lot. Now it's actually gonna be, come to life, if you will, and have some vibrancy and some, uh, character of its own.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I don't see how it could be anything but a positive, really.
Um, especially since it's the, the endowment. Um, if it were town money, that would be different.
Well, it wouldn't be happening.
To say that this is, this is part of the endowment. This is a gift from the Crawfords that is.
From the Crawfords, yes.
Exactly.
Don't worry, Ben. I was planning to mention that.
Thank you.
Exactly. And it's gonna be a while before there's a shovel in the ground too. So, but at, at that point, we'll, we'll be contributing to the economy, um, with having work for people too, which will be a good thing. You know, hopefully our, our staff will be back and, uh, everything will be. Yes, exactly. Thank you, Joyce. Yes, indeed. So, um, our last point, if we're, if we're, we finished with that section, uh, Drusilla will give us an update tomorrow after she speaks with Jonathan. Um, is any, uh, comments and or observations from board members?
Just an observation, you all look healthy. Congratulations on, on maintaining your health as long as you have. And hopefully you'll continue.
Exactly. Everybody's being, uh, safe and careful and, yeah, that's good.
I, I do have one question for anybody, maybe Carol will know best. Uh, what's the status of the town elections that I may have missed?
That I don't know. I do go in once a week and that's for Planning Board. Um, I believe Lori Smith is in during the morning and Jackie is in the town clerk's office in the afternoon or vice versa. Um, you could certainly call and check with them. I know she was talking about a date, looking forward to a date, but nothing has been made firm yet.
More curiosity than, yeah.
Yeah, last week, last week when I was up there, she and Jack, Lori and Jackie were both in the office and were, um, but the conversation I heard as I went by was talking about finding a date and how firm could they make the date at this point?
Exactly. I think it was the Telegram, uh, I believe that had an article, Telegram or Globe, I guess, that had a listing of towns in Massachusetts and when their dates were. And the number of the maybe Telegram, uh, number of dates, um, of towns had changed. They had, um, moved their, uh, their voting dates, but Dudley hadn't as far as I could tell. But, uh, you know.
I believe that was in the Telegram and I, is that my, my recollection is that, yes, Dudley had not made any changes, but a number of other towns had.
Right.
Both town meeting and election dates in some cases have been changed, you know.
Right, yeah.
I don't see anything on the website yet, which tells me they haven't come up with anything. Um, because as each department kind of updates their things, it's been showing up on the town website. And I don't see that particular topic covered.
Okay.
I just wanna give a shout out to Drusilla and Lita for keeping up the hard work every day there at the library and pulling it together for all of us. Thank you.
Exactly, exactly.
Any, anyone that's to wait, drive by and like wave and to see people.
I can throw treats.
There we go. We actually had, uh, four, when I came in today, uh, there were four of our regular teenagers sitting out front using the wifi and I was so excited to see. I was like, what? There are people.
Exactly. Hopefully they were keeping their distance from each other.
Uh, they were not, but they kept their distance from me, so I'm okay with that. Um, and we have had quite a few people coming. We have, thanks to the friends, we have a book cart of free items outside.
Yes.
Have had quite a few. That's, that's been getting some good use, so.
I've, I've actually shared that resource to several families.
That's, thank you. We, we feel, every time we see someone taking a book, we're like, okay, we're still being a library. Still taking books.
And don't, don't forget to tell folks about Libby's, the Libby app. You can go, you can download books for your, for your Kindle app or, uh, or for audiobooks on your iPhone. That's what I do mostly all day long, so. So those are two, uh, good options. And I keep checking in on our library Facebook page. Uh, you'll find that Drusilla and Lita have some programming that you might be interested in. And we wish everyone, uh, health and, and safety, um, until we meet again.
Motion two.
Second.
When is the next meeting? Did you announce?
May nineteenth is our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. We have a, um, motion from Ben and a second from Richard to, uh, adjourn the meeting at six fifty-eight. And I need a roll call vote. So, Richard, please.
Yes.
Ben, yes, okay.
Yes.
Stephanie Ford, yes.
Joyce Narotinsky, yes.
Harrison Records, yes.
Um, Patricia Court, yes. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.
Hi, everyone.